Hey, how you doing? God bless.
Hey.
Good evening, everybody. I have about seven thirty. So we've called this meeting in order. I'd ask for everyone to please rise for the time of the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harris, if you could call the world of members, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Ms. Gregg.
Here.
Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Grappa.
Here.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Here.
Mr. Soto.
And President Reichenbach.
Here.
Councilman Soto is excused this evening. Move to the approval of the minutes for the January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council comments. From the public. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Valentine.
Aye.
Ms. Gregg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grappa.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Hi.
We got the support of people that are listening because we're working on it. I haven't seen all of them together in time. They've been starting to fly out into what they're saying. They're going to have support.
Like my mom would say.
Sure.
Hi.
I know. I was hoping to tell you the story during the second. Um, I think at the last minute we said we'd come. Yeah, and we had, um, yeah, we had a couple more to do that's been going on. But again, at the last minute, it happened.
I got a little bit.
Actually, no, he must have.
Right.
It was just really good, too.
It's like the last area.
He's more like an old.
English.
Someone.
Actually, I moved my couch the other day. And I found it up here. I found it up on the side.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
It's probably.
I mean, it's.
That's why I thought of.
It's very cute.
Test. Test.
What hello.
How are you?
No, but I think I'm beautiful.
I appreciate that.
I got him a camera.
Boy, if you need a test, let me know.
Oh, you're a model.
I had gotten a lower point. That was a good point. I'm looking at you. So he started messing with things like, oh, this has this. You thought it was going to be like the film. I read, no, this is mid-range now. You're down here.
Right.
Yeah.
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 But six times, serving as vice chairman for 11 of your 19 years of service, which ended on December 31st, 2018. And you participated in more than 450 application reviews, as well as discussion of policies and revisions to the Heritage Conservation District ordinance. You brought an extraordinary amount of professional knowledge of architecture, historic preservation, and urban design principles, ensuring that the design of new buildings and the adaptive reuse of existing buildings continues to maintain the historical architectural heritage of our city. Thank you on behalf of the City of Lancaster.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed serving, so that was a very, that makes it easy. But I also appreciated the sort of vice and council staff along the way, particularly Suzanne Stallings, who's sitting in the rear, who's the Historic Preservation Specialist for the city, and Paula Jackson, who recently retired, who was chief planner for the city. They're both integrally involved with the Historical Committee. So I was happy to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you, Bruce.
We'll move on to Council Resolution Number Five, 2019.
Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, designating February 2019 as Black History Month in the City of Lancaster, and urging all citizens of Lancaster to participate in this celebration.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I will toss us to the originator, Councilman Smith-Wadeell.
Excellent. So here I have in my hand a copy of the Resolution Five, 2019. The Resolution makes note of several things, including that this year is the 100th anniversary of what is known as "The Red Summer." So I would encourage anybody to go home and dig into that particularly violent period in American history, and then moves to recognizing some of the very important African-American women who brought the lynchings going on in the Jim Crow South to national prominence, and several who have made significant contributions to this city, including the Honorable Louise Williams, Barbara Wilson, Cheryl Holland-Jones, and my colleague Faith Craig. So what I would really like is if council would be so kind as to pass this resolution, I would love to then present a copy each to Councilwoman Craig and to NAACP President Blanding Watson, who has been so kind as to join us this evening.
Certainly. I thank you, Councilman. I just want to thank you and all those who took time to put this resolution together, and also for the beautiful artwork that we have out in the hallway, if you haven't had an opportunity to see it. Councilman Smith-Wadeell put information in this resolution that part of me is ashamed to say I wasn't fully aware of, and it gave me the opportunity to do research, to learn. And like a lot of things from our past, it's difficult to read about, but it's necessary. And I just sincerely appreciate it, Councilman, that you put that time and effort in, in most things that you do, and particularly with this as well. So thank you for that. Any other council comments? From the public? Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
President Reichenbach.
Aye. Mr. Watson, if you wouldn't mind coming up to be presented with one of the copies of the resolution, if you'd be okay to accept one. And if you want to say a couple of words, Mr. Watson, you don't have to if you're not prepared to, but I want to give you the opportunity. I know you're going to be speaking a little bit later, but feel free if you choose to.
Thanks for the resolution. Black History Month is a moment for all of us to be proud of our accomplishments. Today, we thank you for the Black History Resolution. I hope you will take the moment to honor the full range of achievements of African-Americans contributed to our nation by attending many of the Black History celebrations across the county that are scheduled this month. On behalf of the NAACP, we thank you for recognizing the accomplishments of African-Americans in Lancaster City.
Thank you, sir. With that, we will move on to Council Resolution Number Seven, 2019.
Resolution of the Council of the City of Lancaster, commending the Lancaster Parking Authority for achieving accreditation as an accredited parking organization by the International Parking and Mobility Institute.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Councilman Grupera.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand that the Parking Authority is doing their own ceremony after we pass this resolution, and I don't have a date.
Yeah, it is at their next board meeting, and we can get that information, sure.
Mayor, you briefed council on this resolution?
Just that the Parking Authority is, there's only 25 or 30 parking authorities in the whole country that have this accreditation. It's a 150-point checklist that addresses all things, including finances, facilities, policies, procedures, and it is the third in Pennsylvania behind Philadelphia and Pittsburgh. So we are the first third-class city to have secured this accreditation.
Thank you. Other council comments? From the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Grupera.
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell.
Aye.
And President Reichenbach.
Aye. Move into our first public comment period this evening. This is reserved for citizens who have contacted the city clerk prior to tonight's meeting to request an opportunity to address city council. I would ask that you limit the duration of your comments to three minutes. I know we have a few people here this evening. Mr. Harris, who do we have first?
Tonight, first, we have Tammy Rojas.
Ms. Rojas, good evening.
Still do the name-of-street thing?
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind.
Tammy Rojas, West Vine Street.
Thank you.
Okay. So, good evening, everyone. I'm Tammy Rojas, co-coordinator of the Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee with Put People First PA, and we are helping lead the PA Poor Peoples Campaign, a national call for more revival. We have come here tonight to address city council again on the upcoming closure of UPMC Pinnacle Lancaster and voice our demands. In speaking with fellow Lancaster County residents, Put People First PA members have discovered many areas of concern around the hospital closure and healthcare needs of the community. Keeping UPMC Pinnacle Lancaster open is crucial to the community because we can't afford the hundreds of jobs that will be lost. It will leave us with one hospital within city limits, Lancaster General Hospital, whose emergency room frequently operates overcapacity, leading to care being provided in hallways. Too many members of our local city and county government have been lacking in accountability, transparency, and participation on this issue. Instead, some are holding closed-door meetings with UPMC and dismissing our concerns. The Pennsylvania Attorney General Josh Shapiro filed a petition against UPMC last week and publicly stated the following: "I can't sit idly by and watch our seniors, children, and workers suffer because of UPMC's corporate greed." He went on to say, "As a public charity, UPMC must behave in a manner consistent with its charitable mission in all facets of its operation." The Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee is here to demand the following from our local government: A public meeting with UPMC's executives and CEO present; A city resolution recognizing the need for a public healthcare advocate for the state of Pennsylvania; As well as for all of you to take a public stand to support us and state that you will join us in taking this issue to the state government. We are in the process of planning a weekend of action, a community forum Saturday, February 23rd, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and a candlelight vigil outside the hospital Sunday, February 24th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. And we want you all to join us. Stop the closed-door meetings. Words of support are not enough. Your actions show us whose side you're on. I suggest you start walking the talk, because we're not playing games anymore.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harris, who do we have next on the list this evening?
Ann Winslow is the next.
Good evening, Ms. Winslow. Hi, if you could just share your street and your name, please.
My name is Ann Winslow, and I live on Columbia Avenue.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Once again, my name is Ann Winslow, and I'm a co-coordinator of the Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee with Put People First PA. I'm deeply disturbed by a perceived lack of concern about the closing of UPMC Pinnacle Hospital. This closing will leave the city with one hospital, not only within the city limits, but within seven miles of a highly congested radius, and render the busiest ambulance service in the area without a local home base. When I was a chaplain at a Level One trauma hospital in Baltimore City, I saw firsthand that the survival of patients and their families are directly impacted by the quality of the care they received. If the staff is continually overworked and constantly forced to operate overcapacity, the care is drastically compromised. It results in unnecessary mistakes in treatment, misdiagnoses, and the loss of life. In a local disaster, crisis, or pandemic, this will lead to, at best, abysmal treatment, and at the worst, unnecessary deaths. As serious as this may be, I'm here tonight to speak to you as a survivor of childhood sexual abuse and domestic violence. Healthcare by its very nature puts us all vulnerable to sexual abuse and assault because it involves touching various parts of our bodies, which causes victims and survivors like me to often forego necessary healthcare, even in emergency situations. When I used UPMC Pinnacle, the staff made it their business to accommodate my needs. Because of my abuse, I can't see a male doctor without having a major panic attack that incapacitates me for days afterwards. They found a female doctor or a physician's assistant to see me and told me that it was not a bother. I was offered a quiet place to wait, and they asked repeatedly what they could do to make my time in their facility less stressful. The healthcare treatment I advocated for myself and deserve would either be compromised or unmet at Lancaster General Hospital due to their already operating above capacity, and this will only get worse with the closing of UPMC Pinnacle Lancaster. But the most disturbing aspect of Lancaster General Hospital to me, and which will cause me and probably many other victims and survivors to forego treatment even in an emergency situation, is the unreported sexual assaults that were recently uncovered and reported in LNP. Although the number of assaults may seem minuscule when compared to the treatment received without assaults, to most people, to victims and survivors like me, it's enough to deter us from seeking treatment, even when necessary, and our lives may be in danger.
Thank you for sharing, ma'am. Ms. Rojas, just before I forget, would you mind sharing that information for those meeting dates with our clerk before you leave? Just so council members have access to it. Thank you, ma'am. Sorry, I forgot to ask prior. Mr. Harris, who's next?
Jose Rivera.
Mr. Rivera in the audience? I don't believe I've seen him this evening. Okay, we will move on to the next person who called ahead.
Is Tom Goodhart.
Mr. Goodhart, good evening.
Thomas W. Goodhart, 306 Pearl Street, Lancaster, Pennsylvania.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable Mayor, Council. First of all, I'm here, I will take nothing away from Thaddeus Stevens or Barney Yule. They are very too good people. But the situation we have is that the mayor does not like Lancaster Square. I agree with her. Lancaster Square has been a bane in our butt since it started back 50 years ago, almost. But we are a historical people. We have historical people in this community, not just in Lancaster City, but also Lancaster County. We are the seat of Lancaster County. If you look in front of you, up on the screen, there is stars. What does Hollywood have? Its Walk of Fame. I would like to see Lancaster Square become the Red Rose Walk of Fame Plaza. The situation is, the red star, the red things in the center of the ashtray, that would be a fountain. In the middle of that fountain would be a red rose. And around there would be the 12 roses. Those 12 roses would be the first inductees of the Hall of Fame. Some of those names you probably would recognize. One is Barney Yule. One is Thaddeus Stevens. One is John Wright. John Wright in 1729, asked the son of William Penn to actually make Lancaster County. Then we have James Hamilton, who created Lancaster City. Also, we have Robert Fulton. We all know Robert Fulton for making the North Riverboat, Steamboat, or Leclercy. George Ross, designer of the Declaration of Independence. Edward Hand, we also know very well about. We know about John F. Reynolds, because he died in the Civil War over in Gettysburg, one of the first Lancaster Canyons to die there. Also Norwood Henry Barney Yule. In 1948, he won an Olympic gold medal and two silver medals in London. It's a shame in 1940 and 1944 he couldn't have ran, because he would have been one of the greatest Olympians of all time. He's very well-known in Penn State. Evelyn A. Semtier. If you don't know who Evelyn A. is, on September 11th, 1954, she was on the very first broadcast of the Miss America Pageant. She awarded Lee Anne Meriwether her crown. Also Sergeant or Major Dick D. Winters. You know, we all know about him with the Band of Brothers. Also, I'm bringing up the 2003 U.S. Open and 2010 FedEx Cup champion, Jim Furyk, who has represented Lancaster very well. He just won $188,000 in the present Pebble Beach Open. And the last person we all know won $4.5 million on Jeopardy. His name is Brad Rutter. These are 12 representatives that have made Lancaster a home and very proud to be part of it. The situation is, I understand Barney has done the stuff on the world stage, but if you think about it, Jim Furyk won the FedEx Cup in that world stage, and Robert Fulton has had plenty of stamps made about him throughout the world countries. So the situation is, I would like to see something like, if you don't want to do the concept, but I think that we should show our history, the stars would be roses, Rosette Plaque, as they would be called. Some of them would say, like with, I know that's three minutes. But as I would say, like with people, Evelyn A., it would say 1954 Miss America, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information. Thank you for sharing. Mr. Harris, who do we have next this evening?
Sorry, Mr. President, next is Art Morris.
Mayor, good evening. I see mayors and commissioners walking up. Oh, my.
I'm not Art Morris. My name is Ron Ford. I live on Landis Drive. I'm here representing the Barney Yule Legacy Committee. Also serving on that committee are former Mayor Art Morris, Jeremiah Miller, and Ken Stout, who is a businessman, who was a businessman, who is a businessman here in Lancaster, and was also an outstanding athlete at McCaski. The Legacy Committee has been meeting for over two years. Our final goal is to have the east side of Lancaster Square named the Yule Olympic Plaza. The committee has committed to raise the necessary funds to install a full-size bronze stall and statue of Barney on that plaza. We have also been gathering support throughout the community, and here are some of the letters of endorsement that we have received from various organizations. Those organizations include the Lancaster Historical Society, formerly known as LancasterHistory.org, or the African-American Historical Society of South Central Pennsylvania, the Lancaster County Sports Hall of Fame, Christians' Addies Community Center, Brightside Baptist Church, and we have had four former mayors also endorse this concept: Mayor Charlie Swiftcall, Dan Stork, Rick Gray, and of course, Art Morris, who is serving on the committee. We want to thank also, we have received over 400 signatures of individuals who are interested in this being named the Barney Yule Olympic Plaza. So we are happy for the endorsement that we have received, and we are, I guess, publicly asking the mayor and city council to also endorse this concept. At this point, we'd like to hand each of you a button indicating your support, hopefully, for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. President, if I may briefly.
You may.
I just want to advise all parties here around the naming of Lancaster Square that the mayor has asked the Public Art Advisory Board, to which I represent council, to develop an RFP in keeping with the city ordinance of filing of a petition for the naming of public property or a park. Our meeting today was, where we would review that RFP, or yesterday, was canceled due to the weather, but as soon as that RFP is completed and approved, it will be published, and frankly, gentlemen, it sounds like you're halfway there in terms of the information you've already gathered. And then you can submit those to the Public Art Board, who will then take those responses, find which ones have met all the requirements of the RFP, and bring them to council with their recommendation. The goal there was to create a process that wasn't just subject to the whims of the seven of us sitting here on council, but to create a public process where everybody was aware of the criteria that we would be using. So thank you, gentlemen, for coming to council, and we'll be sure to reach out as soon as the request for proposals is finalized.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, do we have anyone else that called ahead?
Yes, Mr. President, last we have Blanding Watson.
Mr. President, good evening.
Good evening again. Mayor Shirachi, members of city council, I bring greetings from the Lancaster branch of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People. My name is Blanding Watson. I am president of the Lancaster branch of the NAACP and vice president of the Pennsylvania State Conference. The NAACP is very concerned about several areas regarding the city of Lancaster. They include implementation of reforms promised as regard to issues concerning the police department. We do acknowledge that any police department operates under tremendous burden, but we do not believe that burden to be difficult, that reforms and civil rights should not be immediately implemented. Excessive force continues to be of great concern in Lancaster City. For example, Lancaster newspaper recently reported that two officers apparently were involved with excessive force issues. Some citizens suggest that the city practices racially disproportionate enforcement and lack a racially diverse force which gives away the question of equality treatment under the law. Although the city engaged its use of force policy and established a new body camera pilot program, more change in the ground should continue with the working planning group with input from the Department of Justice Reconciliation Division, Stadium Relation Commission, and also much of the input that has been given in all the city council meetings over the last probably eight or nine months from citizens in Lancaster City, community stakeholders, things that have come out of NAACP forums, and also the forum recently that was over at Brightside Opportunity Seminar in 2018. Additionally, minority citizens in the city of Lancaster continue to feel that the predominantly white police force applies different standards to different racial groups with regard to police recruiting. The NAACP, of course, will be working with the city department to increase minority recruiting efforts, which we are currently working through right now with the city police department. We should continue to work, working to improve policies and other measures to improve police, I'm sorry, and community relations. It is very clear to the NAACP that the city needs an independent police review board, which has been brought out in the last few city council meetings, or other powers to review police evidence and documents as we stated in 2018, and again this year. One such board has been established in Philadelphia. We think this could be a model for our city. This board should also be able to make recommendations for discipline and up-to-determination of offending officers. Recently, there are too many police officers who are the subject of repeated complaints, which have been shared publicly through the news. And while the NAACP supports officers, we want the bad and offending officers to be taken off the streets or disciplined. Although there is currently a police and community relations group that meets, this group does not handle complaints against police, but rather discuss community concerns involving police issues and plans for better police and community relations. I wanted to give clarification to that because of the previous council meeting we had in January 8th, where there was much confusion on what the group handles and what the organization does. This group is strictly a planning group made up of community stakeholders, including citizens, representatives from the Department of Justice, and the Pennsylvania Relation Commission. I would like to point out that this group does not negate the need for independent police review board in any manner, nor is it a substitute for such a review board. I also want to note that the NAACP branch receives and investigates complaints against police, employers, educational systems, government agencies, and et cetera. This is an independent process run by the NAACP and is not affiliated with the city of Lancaster. This process also does not replace the need for independent review board. To the extent it has been suggested, NAACP complaint process is part of the city's process or the working group. That is not true. The NAACP process is a private process handled by the NAACP in the capacity as civil rights advocates. Also, I want to clarify that the working group does not meet every Monday, despite statements to the contrary. We further ask that the administration assist upon the following actions we had stated in July 2018 at city council meeting: Continue sensitivity training for the city of Lancaster Police Department. On ongoing implicit bias training, a review of the data related to incidents involving people of color, diversity in hiring and school card with targeted effort for working on community engagement and hiring of a diverse police force, which we are currently working through with the city of Lancaster. Data collection on the use of force and available online to the general public, mental health and de-escalation training. Training of officers of handling cases with Spanish-speaking people. Access to all police policies online. Additional funding to citywide youth aid panels in conjunction with the district attorney's office. Periodic community meetings, law enforcement in community. Establish citizens review board. Review and make the necessary changes to the citizens complaint form that has been brought up over the last few city council meetings and in 2018 and 19. The members of Lancaster NAACP, our coalition partners, and members of the Lancaster community want the city of Lancaster to continue to work with and develop a system that is transparent and equitable for the citizens of Lancaster City. Hopefully, this can also be accomplished with the consultant, the city plan to hire. We call on the city council and mayor to continue to utilize and work with all community stakeholders, get input, and take any necessary actions for fair and equitable treatment of all the citizens. Thank you for your time this evening, and we look forward to meeting with the city officials in the upcoming weeks. The mayor is actually supposed to be meeting with our organization about the strategic plan, and also some police and community stuff and things related to neighborhoods. And we just thank you very much. And we just thank you very much for the comments in relation to the police department.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the information. Mr. Harris, do we have anyone else who called ahead?
No, we do not, Mr. President.
Thank you. We will move right into reports requested by council. I don't believe we have any this evening.
No, we do not.
Then we will move into reports of committees of council meetings that were held on February 4th, 2019. First on the agenda is the Public Safety Committee with Councilman Soto. Being as though Councilman Soto is not here, I'll briefly report on his Public Safety Committee. During the committee meeting, there was a private citizen who came to discuss concerns regarding the police civilian complaint process. There were no specific recommendations made during that meeting. There was a rather lengthy conversation about a specific incident, but not on the more general level of what recommendations would be made in terms of a police civilian review complaint process. So those conversations will be ongoing going forward. Second would be the Public Works Committee, Councilman Grupera.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee was updated on the EPA consent decree for stormwater overflows. Our stormwater program manager, Ruth Hocker, said that on February 27th, 2018, the city's consent decree with the Federal Environmental Protection Agency became effective. That decree requires the city to evaluate and implement practices which will reduce and eliminate sewer overflows. In a couple of weeks, on February 27th, several green infrastructure documents must be submitted to the EPA. The first of those documents is Green at Lancaster, Green at Lancaster, an update to the city 2011 green infrastructure plan. The second is the Green Infrastructure Design Manual, which establishes the design and construction standards for the green infrastructure projects in the city. And the third is the Green Infrastructure Operation and Maintenance Manual, which sets standards for documenting and reporting and tracking green infrastructure activities. And the last document is the Green Infrastructure Draft Monitoring Plan, which sets the standards by which the performance of green infrastructure projects is evaluated. All these documents have been posted on the stormwater page of the city website, where they are available for public review and comment. And this was just an update, so no council action was taken at the time. And the other item on the Public Works agenda was the resolution we just passed, Council Resolution Number 7, Recognizing the Lancaster Parking Authority. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Move into Economic Development and Neighborhood Revitalization Committee, Councilwoman Craig.
Economic development and revitalization met previously. And we have an ordinance up tonight for first reading, amending the ordinance to provide for apprentice program for tattoos. This is, this is an ordinance that was brought about primarily by the business owners themselves and in recognizing that they needed to police themselves according to the rules and regulations of their business, which I would definitely commend them for. Being a small business owner myself, there's rules and regulations that we have to operate and function within in order to keep our license current. So I applaud them for bringing forth and seeing to their ordinance to make sure that their apprentice program is airtight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And we'll be touching more on that a little bit later on the agenda. Moving on to Finance Committee, Councilman Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance discussed a single item. That's Administration Resolution Number 6, having to do with exoneration of 2018 water and sewer charges for city-owned and related properties. That is on tonight's agenda, and we will get into that in more detail when it comes up. And that concludes all that finance discussed.
Thank you. Move on to Community Development and Planning Committee, Councilman Smith-Wadeau.
We simply discussed the resolution recognizing Mr. Evans' contributions to the Historical Commission, which you've heard about and we've already dispensed with today on the agenda. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, Councilwoman Diaz.
Yes, Mr. President. The mayor has nominated Patrick Hopkins for a reappointment to the Higher Education Authority. Mr. Hopkins' term would be from January 1st, 2019 to January 1st, 2024. Also, the mayor has nominated Jasmine Crable to be reappointed to the Human Relations Commission Board of Directors. Ms. Crable's term will be from September 30th, 2018 to September 30th, 2021. I make a motion that these reappointments be approved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Council comments. From the public. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Grupera?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeau?
Aye.
And President Reichenbach?
Aye.
We will move into our legislative agenda. The first item on that agenda is the Heritage Conservation District. Consider the following applications and recommendations from the Historical Commission for improvements to properties within the Heritage Conservation District. Mr. Harris.
Yes, Mr. President. The first is for Lancaster Main Street LLC, owner of 38 East Chestnut, I'm sorry, East Walnut Street. They propose revision of a previously approved plan to construct a new four-story rear addition for residential apartment units and to renovate the front building section. The second is for Nimal Singh Gill, owner of 777 New Holland Avenue, proposes demolition of a modern convenience store and gas pumps, and construction of a new one-story convenience store under an existing metal gas island canopy. And the third is Kyle Solenberger, owner of 131 North Plum Street, proposes partial rear demolition, installation of new steel trellis above a new surface parking area, and installation of fiber cement siding on the building's facade. And last, Ian and Emily Tangard, owners of 535 West Frederick Street, propose enlargement of a front porch of a row house. And all these applications were recommended for approval by the Historical Commission.
Motion to address all four at once? Have a motion and a second for all four approvals. Council comments. From the public. Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Grupera?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeau? Aye.
And President Reichenbach?
Aye.
We'll move on to ordinances for first reading. This bill will not be voted on this evening as this is the first reading to the public. Administration Bill Number 1, 2019, Amending the Tattoo Ordinance to Provide for an Apprentice Program.
An ordinance at the council of the city of Lancaster, amending Chapter 269 of the Code of the City of Lancaster, Tattoos and Body Piercings, Section 269.3, Word Usage and Definitions, Section 269.4, License Required, Section 269.5, License Fees, Section 269.6, License Applications, Transferability and Inspections, Section 269.7, Documents Required to be Posted, and Section 269.8, Regulations, to Provide for Licensing of Apprentices and the Issuance of Licenses for Temporary Establishments, Providing for the Repeal of Inconsistent Ordinances, Providing for the Severability of the Ordinance, and Providing that the Ordinance shall take effect in accordance with Pennsylvania law.
I will turn it over to Councilwoman Craig.
I spoke a few minutes ago about the amendment that was being made. The owners brought about a desire to have guidelines. And those guidelines consisted of quite a few things. And I'm going to have Randy speak about that just a little bit more.
Thank you. As Councilwoman Craig said, it's actually the tattoo and body piercing industry within the city, and I do call it an industry. We have 17 licensed locations within the city of Lancaster that brought the original ordinance to city council in 2007 to regulate the industry here, primarily out of a concern for public health and safety. As the industry grew here, they began to talk to our health officers about presenting an apprenticeship program. So today, if you're actually doing body piercings or tattooing, you have to hold a license to do so. But there was nothing in place to create an apprenticeship program to give someone the experience to do this well and to do it safely. So the ordinance itself, the tattoo ordinance, presents the requirements of a tattoo business and what public safety and health requirements exist. This particular ordinance amendment is just related to the apprenticeship program and establishes a three-year apprenticeship for tattooing and an 18-month apprenticeship for body piercing. It is a self-regulated apprenticeship program, so it is the business owners themselves that will regulate this through inspections of our health officers to ensure that those individuals working within a tattoo shop are either licensed or have an apprenticeship program. Again, primary issues here are skill and public health and safety.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patterson. If there are no further council comments, are there any comments from the public on this issue? Again, this will be revisited at our next council meeting in two weeks, where there will be a vote taken at that time. Hearing none. We will move on to resolutions. This will be an item that will be voted on this evening. Administration Resolution Number 6, 2019.
Resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster, Exonerating 2018 Water Charges in the Amount of $44,294.96 and Sewer Charges in the Amount of $27,401.52 for city-owned or related properties at 29 locations.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Councilman Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. As much as I love reading numbers, I'm just going to give you the quick gist today. So Administration Resolution Number 6, as Bernie had stated, is the exoneration of 2018 water and sewer charges for 29 city-owned properties totaling $71,000, Two examples of these exonerations are the Lancaster Public Library, where water and sewer services are provided as an in-kind donation. Another is the Lancaster Airport, where water is provided in return for use of the airport's snow-clearing machines, which are used during heavy snowstorms. Mr. Hopkins, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing else there.
That means I aced it, so with that.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? From the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Grupera?
Aye. Mr. Smith-Wadeau? Aye.
And President Reichenbach?
Aye.
Move into our second public comment period. And this is open for comments about issues that were not on tonight's agenda. I would ask again that duration of comments be limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to speak this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Tammy Westphalen Street. So I just kind of want to reiterate a little bit of what we were saying earlier. You know, we really do want to hear you guys take a public stand on this and will you join us as we take this to state government? We have already been in contact with Lieutenant Governor John Fetterman's office as well. So we are taking this very seriously. This has been something that we have been working on every day. Very little sleep, very little, any kind of other activities. This is very important. We want you to take this seriously. We are not backing down. So I just really want to make that clear that we are looking for you to take a public stand for this. This is something that will affect the entire community of Lancaster County, whether it's people that work in the healthcare field, like myself. I'm a home healthcare worker. Or folks who receive the healthcare services. This hospital is really going to send an effect, a rippling effect throughout the entire county. So this is a very serious issue, and we really are not playing any games on this. And if there is anybody here that also is concerned with the closing of this hospital, I really encourage you to share your story now would be a really good time. And I know that it's been really hard because, you know, I've talked to many workers who currently work at UPMC Pinnacle Lancaster and Lancaster General Hospital. They are freaking out, and they're also being told not to speak. That is absurd. That is foul. And if you look at press conferences made from UPMC, even within the last like year and a half or so, they literally stated that the business model they want to follow is Amazon. Yes, they publicly stated they want to be the Amazon of healthcare. That literally should have you guys all shaken in your seats. Like, we know how Amazon treats their workers. We know that their workers are sleeping in their cars outside in parking lots because they can't even afford their rent. Is this what we want UPMC to do to our community of Lancaster? Look at what they did to Braddock. Look at what's going on in Pittsburgh. We need to take a stand. We need to come together as a community. And we need to start thinking outside the box. You know, it's not you guys individually that need to take this on. This really could be a community effort. You know, think outside the box and start, stop thinking like typical politics, you know? And, you know, one of the reasons why I became a part of the Poor People's Campaign and National Call for More Revival is because I recognize more with the way Martin Luther King Jr. stood. He was a revolutionary. I'm a revolutionary. You know, and just so that I can give you a kind of an example and why I'm so frustrated is a typical politician might have closed-door meetings and sit there and try to bargain with a business holder. And you end up with a peapod giant. A revolutionary would do what's needed and lose sleep. And whatever it is they got to do to get the community involved to save a hospital, that's the difference.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you want to wait for a council comment? Thank you. So anyone else who'd like to speak? Mr. Watson?
Mission of the NAACP is to ensure equal political, educational, social, and economic rights for all persons to eliminate race-based discrimination. The mission includes a focus The mission includes a focus on the right of African-Americans and other people of color to have optimal health outcomes and access to timely, quality, affordable healthcare. African-Americans continue to have the highest incidence, prevalence, and mortality rates from chronic diseases like cardiovascular disease, diabetes, and obesity, and issues like HIV/AIDS continue to overwhelm the black community and other communities of color more than any other racial and ethnic group. The NAACP is committed to eliminating the racial and ethnic inequities that exist within our healthcare system that undermine communities of color, their life opportunities, and their ability to contribute fully to the common good. That's the mission of the NAACP. In regards to UPMC, we just urge and ask the city to have some public forums centered around the issues of the healthcare issue that exists within the City of Lancaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Brown, good evening.
Terry Brown. This for the mayor and council. Now, I got one person deceased already now from Lancaster Regional, transferred over to Lancaster, and I got one more on the deathbed right now because of this hassle right now because our private organizations, it don't mean nothing. Because one thing pointed out about that, now the mayor ain't going to say nothing for Lancaster Regional because it's private, but the mayor will say something if the Marriott Motel will go belly up. The mayor would jump on real fast about the Marriott Motel, like the one they got in the back, it supposed to be $105, now it's $135 million. Now, where are they going to get $135 million that, ma'am? That's why Rick Gray built it on thing for $105, and now it jumped up high. Now, a private organization, it's not private because why only Lancaster Hospital is closed down? Why Hasbro Motel, why, excuse, okay, why Hasbro Hospital is open up? Lebanon is open up, opened up. I did a lot of investigation work. My name is Terry Brown, Private Investigations, and I just ran all over and asked questions about why. They said it's private, it's private. Private don't mean, see, everything around here is private. Most every store is around here, private, but see, nobody, give nobody no reason why they're shutting down. But a hospital, that means you're killing a lot of people, thousands of people, and nobody on council saying nothing, the mayor ain't saying nothing, but the people are saying stuff. If we try to go, we try to go more and more and more, like, I might end up going back up to Hasbro and talk, find out why Lancaster Regional is shutting down. What's the reason why? Don't say it because the private don't mean nothing. There's got to be a certain type of reason why they're shutting down, but nobody, they give nobody a reason why, and people are dying, families are dying because they was in the Regional Hospital. Now, they got to get transferred over to Lancaster General, but time they get over to the General Hospital, all the people could be gone then. And nobody is saying anything from Lancaster, Pennsylvania. Why? Now, you got all these people on city council supposed to say something, the mayor supposed to say something, but she ain't said nothing. What's the reason why? There's a whole reason why, and I feel, I don't want to run because I will run up to Hasbro all over Philadelphia, Washington, DC, and ask all kinds of questions why they're shutting down. Because they're private? No. It's got to be something, the reason why that nobody knows. Terry, that's what I said. Remember, you got to find a reason why, and everybody loves to know the reason why they're shutting down. Because remember, that's a hospital. They got hundreds of people in there and dying, fighting for their life right now. Right now, I got two. I got one gone and one fighting for life right now.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other comments from the public? Good evening. If you could just share your name and your street, please, sir?
Perfect. Good evening. My name is Xavier Garcia Molina, College Avenue.
Thank you.
I just wanted to come here today to show my support for all the work that Tammy and everyone else is doing, because what I hear them saying really is that we need to engage in conversations around what our community health needs are now that this is presented to us. But one of the things that's happened to me when I've been engaging people in this type of conversation is that I've been finding that many feel unable to effectively communicate with civic leaders because of a language barrier. We have four people today who have participated in city council who unfortunately have not been able to understand anything that's been said, and we have been saying a lot of important things tonight. I also engaged in a conversation with Martha Harris and with Councilman Smith-Wadeell, who is telling me that Millsy is actually working on interpretation services. But what I'm asking you all to do today is kind of support that as well, so we can move forward in engaging more people from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll go to the report of the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. I want to talk about six different things tonight, so a little bit of everything. Phone interviews have commenced for the positions of the Director of Public Works and the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, so we are, we have posted those position announcements nationally and are working with Samaritan Business Consulting to conduct the preliminary interviews and looking forward to moving, continuing to move that process forward. April 1st, applications will begin to be accepted for applicants to become a firefighter within the Fire Bureau. We're looking forward to moving through that process. Mr. Watson mentioned our police recruitment efforts, which are kicking off, and I will just give a special call out that the effort that it will take for us to recruit and hire a diverse police force will require all of us, absolutely every single person, in order for us to increase the number of applicants coming from city residents. There are six vacancies remaining for school crossing guards, so this is also a special call to help make sure that children have safe passes to school. So if you know someone who's looking for a few hours of work a day to support our children getting to school safely, please go online and visit, and also Amber is going to be rolling out another social media push to help fill those positions. And speaking of the school district, we are working our way through the renewal of our contract with the School District of Lancaster to continue our 15-year partnership of providing school resource officers, which has proven itself as an effective means of decreasing the number of youth who are referred to juvenile justice. In addition to their law enforcement responsibilities, one of their other primary roles is fostering a positive school climate through relationship building with school administration, teachers, and the students themselves, and really working to build trust between and among students and adults by focusing on getting to know the students, serving as a role model, and working to identify students who might be facing challenges and need additional resources or attention so that they can be successful in school and stay in school. So we're looking forward to continuing with that negotiation and continuing with our school resource officer program. I also wanted to make mention that on March 4th, we're going to be launching a very unique initiative here in the City of Lancaster in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce and a number of businesses that are located in the northeast quadrant of Lancaster County to provide access to transportation, to connect individuals in the City of Lancaster to jobs that exist outside of the county, and who, and those jobs which may not be readily accessible using private transportation. And so that will be launching on March the 4th, and so I look forward to sharing more with you about that. We are actively, through the Director of Neighborhood Engagement in my office, working with a number of employers who are located throughout the county and also here in the city to identify individuals for jobs who may be underemployed or unemployed. Number four, construction. I just want to thank city residents for their forbearance for the never-ending, it seems, construction season, which is ongoing as the weather continues to cooperate. So Water and Lemon Streets, there is a major sewer line replacement of 125-year-old brick sewer that I know is causing traffic headaches in terms of being able to cross over Water Street between Lemon and Chestnut. Walnut Street, I don't know what to say about Walnut Street. It's a hot mess right now. It's going to stay that way for a while as UGI continues its improvements. We also have a water main replacement that's going to continue on the east side, and we're ramping up to get all of this work done to be able to repave Walnut Street at the end of summer 2019. And finally, I just want to highlight that UGI is going to begin work on Prince Street. That's imminent construction in the next three to four weeks. There will be a number of neighborhood and business meetings related to that construction that will be held at the Ware Center with the retail community downtown, and then with residents specifically focusing on South Prince Street. They'll be setting up two work zones from Seymour to King and then King to James. This is going to take some time. It is also just a heads up that this is going to make travel north-south through, using Prince Street, more challenging for a little time, and that, again, is ahead of repaving efforts that will be happening later this year. And that is a state route, so we have less, we have less information about the timeframe for repaving, and so I just continue to ask for your patience as we move through these construction projects and infrastructure improvement projects. Number five, you may recall, we had a neighborhood meeting regarding the future of the Franklin Street properties that was formerly Shell Recycling. We did a formal RFP process. We received one response back for that RFP. It was an incomplete application, and so at this time, we are just holding. We're going to continue to pursue other ideas for that property and are going to hold on reissuing an RFP at this juncture as we sort through some other alternatives for what we can do and prospective partner. And then finally, February 14th, is Valentine's Day. We're going to be rolling out, I don't know, six, Amber, six different neighborhood initiatives. We're going to be launching Neighborhood Leaders Academy mini grants to support neighborhood improvement projects and a whole host of other things, so I just wanted to call council's attention to February 14th and to be checking in on social media for the rollout of a number of neighborhood-led efforts, as well as the public that's here tonight. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My report this evening will be brief. As some of you probably have heard, Lieutenant Governor John Fetterman is making his way around the state of Pennsylvania right now, doing a listening tour regarding the legalization of marijuana. While that's a state issue, a lot of you in the audience know that Lancaster has been a leader in having these conversations, whether if it was medical marijuana or others over the last several years. I would encourage residents, as the Lieutenant Governor announces his time and place to be here in the near future, to attend these meetings and pay attention. While legalization of marijuana may not be everybody's cup of tea, per se, the one issue along with marijuana that should concern all of us is the disproportionate amount of people of color who've been incarcerated over the years or having their lives ruined by this. I will say now, and I will say to the Lieutenant Governor, and I will say to the Governor and anybody else who listens, if legalization in the state goes forward, there has got to be retroactive addressing of people who've been either illegally or disproportionately incarcerated or having their lives ruined. Philadelphia has led the way on this. It's doable. It's possible, and frankly, people saying that it can't be done and it's too hard, that that's an excuse. It can absolutely be done, and if the state decides in its wisdom that legalization or some for, that goes forward, it cannot and should not happen without a clear addressing of really the heart of the issue, which has been people of color in this country and marijuana being used as, in many cases, an excuse to put people behind the eight ball that they can't get out of. So I can tell you personally, I will be having that conversation with the Lieutenant Governor. I'll be attending the meeting when it comes to Lancaster, and while, you know, there's a lot of conversation to be had of what legalization may or may not look like, my bigger concern is to make sure it's loud and clear that if we go this route, do not even pretend to forget that this isn't an issue that you have to talk about. So that's just something that I'm passionate about. I would encourage others to go on. Lieutenant Governor Fetterman is very active on social media. If you use Facebook and Twitter and other avenues, reach out to him. He is responsive. Email him. He will hear you. And if this is something you're passionate about as well, do not let a moment go by that you don't remind them that this issue is bigger than a plant, while that may be important as well. It's about people's lives and an entire, multiple generations of people who've been wiped out for the sake of this issue. So I would just ask that you keep that in mind. That's it for my report. Council comments? Yes, Councilwoman Diaz.
I just wanted to make a comment in reference to the UPMC. I understand your frustration. As a Lancaster General employee, we are overwhelmed. We are very busy, and we are also fighting back to make sure that everyone has a local place, especially when people do have strokes and heart attacks, which is a timeline of between 45 to 60 minutes, to make sure that they get in there for any type of treatment that they need immediately. But you also have to understand that sometimes it takes an army to fight a war because it's not just city council, it has to be the whole community. So I just want to let you know, in my behalf, I am supporting you, and whenever the meeting comes, I will be there for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And I would like to take
Councilwoman Craig?
One minute and thank my colleague, Councilman Smith-Wadeell, for his support and confidence in me, and on behalf of the women that have come before me, thank you also.
If I may?
Yes.
Lancaster is fortunate to have a lot of great boards that do a great service to our community. One of those boards, the Lancaster City Human Relations Commission, which I have the privilege to serve. I just want to give a shout out to the board itself and talk about some of its accomplishments. Last year, the several individuals donated time to develop a strategic plan, and one of those outcomes has been the formation of subcommittees to execute on the plan. So I say to all my council colleagues to look forward to the next HRC presentation because there are good things to come. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody. Be safe out there.